We're underway here, and we don't have any public, so we don't have to silence cell phones. So roll call, please.
Director Dan Hanson.
President.
Director Shelby Boston.
President Mark Solow.
Here.
Director Bill Kellogg.
Here.
Division five priority is vacant at this time.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go right to the business at hand here. A three A, approval of easement with PG&E to allow undergrounding of utilities on PID-owned lands.
Yeah, so PID owns approximately five miles of road within the town limits, and so we all know PG&E is going to go through and underground, I believe, the whole town with power, and so they need an easement to be granted to them, a public utility easement to go through and underground on those specific streets. Dustin kind of has put together the easement with PG&E's legal and has reviewed it, has went back and forth, so I don't know if, do you want to mention anything on it?
It's a fairly straightforward agreement, easement agreement. It does contain the normal indemnity-type provisions. Maybe one of the unique things that we don't typically do here at the district is it's, starting out, it's a floating easement, so PG&E will have the ability to float within your fee property, and then, once they, you know, for constructability reasons, they might be on the left side of the road, but then they traverse to the right side and so on. So it's floating, but then, once they install their pipe, they'll have a GPS coordinates, basically, of the exact alignment, and then it goes from a floating easement to a precise easement, five feet on either side of the underground line, and the easement agreement speaks to that process and how that future document will be recorded and we'll have access to it as well.
Doesn't easements have some value? Other words, people can buy and sell easements, can't they? Just like other real estate?
Yes, so in our discussions with PG&E, consideration has been discussed briefly, and they already have power poles there, so, you know, way back when, they paid some consideration to the district. What we're talking about is essentially transitioning from that overhead easement to an underground easement, and, you know, given the value to PID in terms of, you know, liability avoidance, and then the value to the community, we didn't call out some new consideration, you know, like a thousand dollars per mile or whatever the value may be. So the consideration is just recognition of, they've got poles already there, and there's value to the district and to the community in undergrounding.
So there's not going to be any difficulty in, through USA, finding our pipelines that exist?
We're going to talk about that as the next agenda item, but yeah, that will be their responsibility. There's indemnity provisions that if they have an accident and there's injury to person or property, that's on them.
Thank you.
Is there consideration for road patching, repairing, putting back in like condition or better than?
Yeah, there's a clause in the easement agreement, that's not our purview, that's the town's, but the provision requires them to secure all town encroachment and road patching requirements, they have to comply with the town's requirements there.
Okay.
It will be an upgrade. I assure you.
You will want to drive on that.
At least on that.
You'll wish you had a narrow car.
On a bike.
Any other discussion, questions? Okay, is this require a motion or is this just give direction to you?
Motion.
Motion, okay. Wait, now motion?
So it's this one. I move to approve and authorize the district manager, no, this one's not.
No.
I don't have to, is there a motion on?
It's just a motion.
I don't think it's printed.
So, right, a motion to approve the easement with PG&E to allow undergrounding of utilities on PID-owned roads.
Well, it also mentions AT&amp;T in here somewhere, doesn't it? Pacific Bell?
Right, that's correct. They, my understanding is AT&amp;T is in the process of, they would like to underground, but they're still working out the details, you know, cost-sharing and such with PG&E. So the expectation is they will eventually work those issues out and that both parties will be easement holders and obligated, you know, with indemnity and the other clauses in the agreement.
Yeah, well, if you have a place for AT&amp;T to sign this agreement, along with ourselves and Pacific Gas and Water Company.
So should the motion include AT&amp;T and? Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
So I move.
Thanks, Bill.
I move to approve, the approval of easement with PG&E and AT&amp;T to allow undergrounding of utilities on PID-owned roads.
Second? Anybody?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you.
Okay, item two, it's a little confusing, and we don't have all the details, but we wanted to bring it forward to the board during this time because it is a time-sensitive issue because we are getting inundated with USA work based on that they've just up, I think they just brought 70 people into town to start undergrounding, and they're tearing up our infrastructure. We don't have the ability to keep up with the USA work, so we've talked to PG&E, we had a sit-down with PG&E early on about them actually paying for it, which we assumed that they were going to go out and procure it. Well, that didn't go forward, so they, what they asked us was for us to go out and procure it, and then for Dustin to write a contract for a reimbursement clause to have them reimburse the district 100% of the cost for USA. We did sit down with them and ask if the USA work would only be specific to their projects, and they said no. It's as much USA, you could use them for whatever projects you want, as long as they are used for our projects also. So we sat down with Jerry Rice, who is one of the project managers up here, Jim Ladrini, myself, and a few others from PG&E to get a number of employees that it would take to keep up with the USA work on a daily basis. They both agreed that for individuals, full-time individuals, would work to keep up with the workload with the option of adding a fifth individual if necessary. PG&E was open to that. So we went out to Utilic Quest, asked for an agreement. That took a little bit of time for them to get back to us, so we got that today. It's over with Dustin now, so it's going to get legal review, and then Dustin is working on an agreement with PG&E to get a contract with them for them to obligate themselves to reimburse us 100% for the cost. So right now, what we're asking is for authorization for the district to be able, for myself to be able to execute a contract with Utilic Quest after legal review, and to execute a contract with PG&E based on that there is going to be 100% reimbursement for all costs associated with Utilic Quest. Does that sound about right? Good.
I read part of this. I wouldn't do business with them. They've got so many clauses in here to protect their own interests and even bankruptcy things, and, I mean, they threw the whole kitchen sink and everything into it. If you, they've got themselves protected like you wouldn't believe. Doesn't protect us, as far as I can tell, but that's Dustin's business.
Yeah, well, you're ahead of me. I have not had a chance to review this agreement yet, but that's standard. It's their opening offer.
It's become an industry standard in construction to have.
Like this?
All the additional insureds and it's.
Oh, but is, all of the companies that provide this kind of service have this kind of a contract?
You'll have a similar contract if you just want a drywelder to come in and do your bathroom. Everybody, I call it a CYA clause, but they list everybody and they want, they want to be on everybody else's insured as an additional insured, all the way down to the bankruptcy stuff. I think it really looked like a pretty much standard corporation insurance demanded.
Insurance-heavy.
CYA file.
And the other thing is Utilic Quest is really the only one out there that has the staff and the ability to come in and do this type of work. They have other subcontractors out there that we've seen, but they're all subcontracted through Utilic Quest.
So they're coming in cheaper than our cost and all our indirects and everything of having our employees do it?
And to bring an employee on and then try to get rid of them after the work is completed would be much more difficult than hiring a contractor, and it's zero cost to us, so.
What happened to the sound devices we bought to be able to find pipelines and stuff?
We, those are leak detection, so we still have those.
That they would find pipes?
And we still have people that can do USA work, which we're trying to, but we're doing probably 10% of what's required on a daily basis, and then those PG&Es out there hitting our pipes on a constant basis.
And so, Kevin, just for clarity, so you brought it now, even before legal review, because of time-sensitive issues?
Correct.
Versus waiting until the 16th?
Correct.
Or the 16th, but our next board meeting?
Yes, yeah, so as soon as Dustin can get this through legal review, I want to get it executed to help take, alleviate the pressure off of the individuals out there.
You have to give a 48-hour notice, don't you? USA, you put that, mark that down, is that's a 48-hour notice? And then within that 48 hours, you're supposed to come out and mark where your pipes are?
Correct. So they're doing, they're at, at one time, they've asked for the whole district to be USA'd and within a 48-hour notice, which was ridiculous, that was when they came in and redid the pipes.
If they still hit our pipes, aren't they still liable?
Not if we don't come out and USA them. We are liable.
They're not liable at all?
Nope.
You can't hold up their work or anything?
Nope. They're holding up their work to salvage our pipes at this point, so they're actually taking the hit on their side at this point because they're actually being nice and not digging in a place that we haven't gone out and.
Treating quietly.
Yeah, so.
Where's Utilitech located? Where do they come from?
Georgia.
Oh, really? Okay, but they must have office close by Sacramento?
Sacramento.
Sacramento, yeah.
I think it's the closest.
Think of the commute.
AT&amp;T uses them for all their, that's who they contract out. PG&E has their own USA work in-house, which we asked if maybe we could just use them, and they can't even keep up with their own because they're having to go out and do all the gas.
Right, okay.
Can we make this conditional on Dustin's approval?
Well, we hope we do.
Yeah.
I would hope you would make the conditional upon legal review. Yeah, and just so we're clear, there's, there will be two agreements. One is obviously the agreement between the district and the Utilic Quest, which you had before you, it's their opening draft, that there will be, I'm sure, items that we'll need to strike or modify, amend, but then there's a second agreement with PG&E where PG&E, you know, essentially, we're just the bank. We pass the invoices on, we pay the contractor, but we're getting payment from PG&E.
Well, their payment terms in this contract are pretty, I don't know if we could meet them, it's like it's.
Yeah, we'll probably want to do a pay when paid clause, so that, we'll want to do a pay when paid clause, which means that we don't pay the contractor until we've been paid by PG&E, so we're really just a pass-through entity. The original proposal, as Kevin mentioned, was PG&E would contract directly with this consultant, but for whatever reason, that was not of interest to them. I have some suspicion, I think it's just their own bureaucracies are trying to avoid, so.
After seeing their contract, I can understand why. Oh, the attorney said no.
So if we're going to be a pass-through, are we going to capture any administrative costs?
Yes.
Okay.
We're going to try.
Okay.
And I don't know if that's 5%, 1%, I mean, we should probably talk about what administration of this would cost on a week, or is it weekly or monthly? What are we expecting?
They have a weekly cost. Oh, this isn't the right one.
Yeah, it's going to be a monthly cost.
You mean the billing, the billing is everything?
Yeah, it's just going to be the billing portion of it and then the initial setup of it, because all those USA tickets will go, we won't even see them, they'll go directly to them.
Right, but the, just the matter of managing the contract and making the payments is taking staff time.
Right. We'll put an administrative cost in there, and we'll calculate it, calculate that in there, and I don't think PG&E will have an issue with putting an administrative cost in there.
Okay.
Very good.
I would move to approve and authorize the district manager to execute agreements with Utilic Quest for underground locator services and with PG&E to fund Utilic Quest's contract in full upon legal review.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, you have a second, Bill? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, thank you. Okay.
Three C. Last one in is a, an agreement between the county, PID, and Cal Water for a feasibility study for the Intertie project that we have talked about recently. The county is the one that's going to actually handle the contract with West Yoast, who has already done some of the initial studies with Cal Water, and actually, when we were talking about it from a drought standpoint, which was actually trying to pump water back up the hill for us, this is a, kind of an opposite direction, which would be feeding water down to them. So they'll be doing the feasibility study because they already have a knowledge of that, but also they have a knowledge of the whole Cal Water system too, so they have a real good understanding of the intricacies of the Cal Water system, how that would be introduced, if there needs to be storage tanks, if there needs to be other type of facilities that would be there to use the water. The agreement would be a quarter for us, a quarter for Cal Water, and 50% for the county. I think I did mention last time that we have been approved for backfill funding from the state. One of the big conditions on that backfill funding was that we were looking at expanding our business model. We use this project as our year-four project in all of our talks with the legislators, who did support the backfill funding going forward. There is contingencies on that backfill funding, which include a feasibility study that the California Regional Control Board?
State Water.
State Water Control Board is going to look at our going forward, our ability to go forward as a business, and if there should be a consolidation between ourselves and another water agency going forward. This moves us in the direction of staying independent, being our own water agency, and keeping control on the ridge. I don't know if Dustin has anything that he would like, he's been in all the meetings too with this.
I do want to speak, Mr. President, but I'll defer to Director Kellogg.
Well, I have five or 10 minutes, you want to talk before?
No, I'll wait.
Oh, okay. I actually made up a speech yesterday for Toastmaster, so this is something I went back and reviewed. It's a PID Ridge Valley Intertine. First question I have is, this is a SEQA that was sent in in, let's see, get it right here, March the 3rd, 2011, to begin the process of renewing water rights. They still have not been renewed, okay? So we don't have solid water rights. Dustin can, he's an expert on that, but just to give you an idea, it's 2019, it's 18 years later, and, is that right? Did I do that right? Yes. Any rate, we don't have solid water rights, so how are we going to sell water out of the district without knowing what our water rights, are they going to interfere, or is this going to allow somebody to possibly prove over time that they could possibly move in on our water rights? Another problem I ran into is one customer, billing payment terms, maintenance of the pipeline, we're dealing with one customer, the same customer that had sat in a board meeting and had Dustin and Kevin say, "We're not going to do any business with Cal Water." That's only been a few months ago. So maybe you don't recall, I certainly do, because I commented at the time, I thought that was a good idea. So we're dealing with one customer, so as time goes by and we're trying to work out rights and maintenance and so forth on this system, then you have to watch real carefully. You're not in a very strong position. I don't know who's going to pay for the pipe, don't know how big the pipe's going to be, don't know the capacity of the pipe, it has to go through town. There is actually three small water companies down on Skyway that have to be dealt with. On, they're all on wells, but they're, they exist, and they're part of developments that have taken place on Skyway. One of them, you would really notice with all the new trailers and so forth there, that's all on wells, and no other water. The other one's on the other side of the road with new modern homes, and they have storage tanks, and as far as I know, that's on wells. There's a third one that's a new development close into town. I couldn't find who owned it or anything on my little mapping thing to check it out, but there's three companies or three entities, I don't know if they're companies, that are already using water on the right-of-way, and it'd be on the side, two of them are on the side that the pipe would possibly go down. My understanding is it would go on the side where PG&E is putting in the service now. So the return on investment, there has been nothing said about return on investment. How much are we going to invest? I know this study's supposed to bring in all of that, but the last time we looked at it, and it was mentioned, was in a water supply and historical demands put together by George Barber, and even it's got a seal on it, and you can get it off the internet if you're that curious. I, all my records burned up, so I printed this thing out, and as tight as I am, I actually printed it. So it has listed on page 3.0-1, December 2015, "The four PID has been investigating drought supply options for some time. No options readily available or inexpensive. While PID will continue to analyze and consider the best course of action moving forward, PID and its customers need to focus on living within their existing supply." And this has figures in it that shows the minimum supply in a drought year. But any rate, it says four alternatives are wells within the district boundaries, Myosene Canal Water Pumped Up to Water Treatment Plant, Lake Oroville, the Intertie with Del Oro Water Company, Intertie Connection with Cal Water in Chico. Of course, nobody could look forward to the future where George Barber's going to be the, is the manager of Cal Water and Chico and Oroville. So in this, it will tell you that in the dry years, we have a short supply of water. Now, you can argue with this report or whatever, but we're talking about, we're a wet year, we have tremendous water supplies, unfortunately, we have fewer customers due to the fire. Nobody can predict how many people are coming, how much water they're going to use, or anything else. But I'm seeing, to me, there's holes in the whole idea. We looked at it at one time, the Intertine, and yes, we did calculate in the cost of bringing water up, and yes, we turned it down, and never really went very far at all. And that's what the board did at that time. To me, it's, still has all these holes in it. Now, I asked for Georgiana to copy, this is a thing that normally appeared in our monthly things, it hasn't appeared for several months, and this is, it's revised once a year, and the important place to go is steel four to 12 inches, 56 miles, 33% of our supply. And as far as I understand, that's a World War II surplus pipe that was put in the district and which we keep ignoring in our budgets, there's no money for a pipeline in our budget this year, and we keep ignoring like it should go away, but this is one of the reasons why we have so many breaks in our lines and so forth. We need to take the kind of work that we're talking about to put into this study, and monies, monies aren't very much, with the work of the management team to come up with the information that the consultant is going to need from us on different things. So to me, what we're going the wrong direction, we need to repair the pipes which we deliver water with, we may save water, but we'll certainly be in a better position, and just now, we talked about the right-of-ways and so forth for PG&E to protect our water lines. And they do need protection. There's an odd thing, when I was on the board and we were talking about some other issues in the drought years, that Doug Fleischer brought up, Doug's passed away now, but he came up here as a young man, 10 or 11 years old, and the town was, didn't have any trees. It'd all been logged off, and if you look into our records, most of these tall trees are, if you went in and cut them down and counted rings, you'll find they're about 100 years old, the big ponderosas. Well, we're now in the process of taking out the forest. It's going to be gone before long here. We're going to try to get it done before the winter, before we don't have too many trees falling, but it's happened. In other words, we've got, our forest is pretty well gone, and it'll take years to come back with whatever we do. Well, this interesting piece of information I found was the records, which is in this cost of service study, where it talks about drought years and how little water the district had in some years back in the 20s and 30s, when we didn't have a forest. Well, this article I came about, and researcher came about, is very simple. The trees help harvest the rain. Them standing up, being tall, they actually bring up the rainfall yield in a forest than if it was a clear hillside with the grassland underneath it. So the grassland isn't going to collect it, it's going to allow water to penetrate the vine once it gets there, but these drought years that they showed in PID records, I think they're, they're not PID's, they're from Megalia, but, see, when the dam was put in in 1915 in Megalia, all those hillsides around it were forested, and the forests were cutting down up there right now. It was approximately 100 years old, and it, the trees were dying in the tops because they were immature. And we've had two forestry studies on, for PG, for the district, where we've paid for that kind of information, which we haven't used, it's sitting in the records. So I'm asking questions, or will, in a way, so I think I've covered about everything I meant to call, cover. I just think it's, for PID, it's bad business. We're not covered by what the districts in the valley are covered with. I've asked several times at meetings and so forth, are we part of this groundwater thing at all? Oh, no, you're exempt, you're up in the mountains, you don't, you don't have to worry about this groundwater condition in the valley. You don't have any interest in it, we're not going to regulate you on it. So there's no real pressure other than looking at a wet year with terrible disaster for our water rate to be down, used, and say, "Well, look at all that water up there. We can get it down there," and I don't know, Dustin can answer the water rights because his firm is a specialist in water rights, "how are we going to protect ourselves from Cal Water deciding that they want our water rights because they've been buying it and using it, and see what can happen?" Or any other entity down there for that matter. And it's interesting to me, it's only treated water, which goes to the, the last time I heard anything from the board or from Dustin, Kevin, you were talking about putting water in Little Buick Creek and taking it out of Buick Creek to sell water down in the valley. And I haven't heard anything more about that. So I just saying to you, I'm trying to educate you for what's gone on in the past, and say, be cautious about this, don't run and think it's going to be the thing that saves our rear end, what'll save our rear end up here with this district is fixing the pipes and having a good water system, while we still have the attention from the people in the state that want to help us in the long term. I don't, and I know Kevin's got it, well, he's got dollar figures somewhere, I guess, to talk about, we're, it's all yours, guys.
Thank you, Bill.
Okay, so Director Kellogg, I will try to answer all your questions here, just give me a few moments. This is a very thorny issue, and it's wrapped into the politics of the state's backfill funding, and in my opinion, some of the political objectives in Sacramento concerning water and what the state would like to do with water, and it's just unfortunate that we're in a position where the state has something we need, backfill funding, and they can attach strings to it. So, and I'll elaborate on that in a moment, but the reality of the situation is, we have water supply, and we will have surplus water supply for the foreseeable future. It's amazing, Bill, you know, you and I were in those boardrooms in 2011 and that time period, and it was a different world. period, and it was a different world. It, it just truly was. That was a world where we had a drought problem, with 10,500 connections, a leaky system. We were exposed to a multi-year drought, and we were looking at options to bring in water to provide water to our customers. Well, what has changed since 2011, that time period? At least three big things. One is a historic multi-year drought, where, like it or not, the state imposed a 36% conservation rate on our customers. And what that did is that it basically educated, it was a forced education of our customers on how to reduce water usage. And their per person, per capita usage never recovered after that state mandate. So, it, it basically forced conservation that then stuck. The second issue, second big change, is the passage of the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, which is, you alluded to that, that we're not subject to that law because we're outside of a alluvial groundwater basin, but many of our neighbors down in the valley are, and that has really changed their perspective on things. And, and the third obvious thing is the fire, which took our customer base from us. So, we are in a position where we have to find customers in order to survive. And very early on in our discussions in Sacramento, the state recognized this. You know, the state's position is, we're willing to help you for a time, but then you need to figure out a way to get back on your feet and, and maintain your own financial viability long-term. The state's solution to that is consolidation, which we don't quite know what that is, and they haven't been completely forthright about what that is, but it's a potentially scary proposition, because where it is today, we that live in paradise have local control, right? You are an elected board, elected by folks in this community. If you decide to, you, you control your rates, as, as one example, right? I mean, and you control everything else, from recreation at the lakes to your water rates, to how you prioritize projects and, and things in your budget. You have total local control over your local water resource. Consolidation, at a minimum, is going to strip some of that away, because, and, and it could strip all of it away, if you consolidate with some kind of private entity where, where you really have no, no more local representation over your water resource. So, it's a, it's a scary proposition, and that's the state's answer. And Kevin and I spent many hours in Sacramento saying, that is not the solution. We recognize that we cannot be on the state's dole forever. We need to do something. Our answer is to find customers elsewhere. And I've talked to you before about, there are two types of water transfers. There's a raw water transfer, and there's a treated water transfer. We can sell, in my opinion, safely 5,000 to 7,500 acre feet on average per year, and we could safely do that and still have enough water supplies for our local needs. If you do a raw water transfer, it's just frankly not lucrative enough. The first problem is, you never know when, when the demand is going to be there, because folks want to buy raw water when they need it, right? And that tends to be the drier years. That's not every year. For example, this year, there are no water transfers, raw water transfers this year, at least not in Northern California. So, one problem is you can't count on it year in and year out. Second problem is it's just not lucrative enough. I think you could at best expect something like $400 an acre foot, which on a 5,000 acre foot transfer is 2 million bucks. Okay, that's 20% of your budget. So, you're going to have to make incredibly hard decisions with your staffing and your personnel and your offices, your equipment, your pipeline replacement, if you've only got 20% of the revenue. Okay, so, it's, but it is an option. Raw water transfers are absolutely an option. And if there's ever an opportunity, it is my job, Kevin's job, to present that to you and present it fairly, and then you guys will decide whether that's something to pursue or not. The other type of transfer is a treated water transfer. And, you know, we are blessed that the fire did not take out our watershed or our treatment plant. So, where we sit today is we've got, in large part, a stranded asset that is underutilized that has a lot of value. So, is there a potential where you could sell treated water that is much more lucrative? You know, it's, it would be a cost plus model, so it would be cost of service plus a percent. It would have to be in order for it to make financial sense. So, what Kevin and I have discussed is something like cost plus 25%, which is on the order of $950 an acre foot, something like that. So, you go from 400 raw water to $950 an acre foot, that fills your budget hole. And, and also, there is universal demand for treated water, whether it's a wet year or a, a dry year. So, we have focused on that as a concept. These are all concepts. Nothing has been committed to. And the, the item before you is a feasibility study. So, again, it's not a commitment, it's just, well, it's a commitment of funds, but it's not a commitment to the project. You're analyzing the constructability of a, of an Entei with the valley, and align, things like alignment, cost, you know, back of the envelope, cost of construction, how are you going to get across to Buute Creek? Do we need to do anything with VOCs at the, at the point of Entei? You know, so it, it starts identifying all of these various issues, and there's also a water right aspect to this as well, Director Kellogg. So, it just helps present a, a fuller picture of, is this a possible option for the district to deal with the reality that we are not likely to have a sufficient number of customers in year three? Originally, we were asking for three years of backfill funding. This would be our year four project. The state has said, we'll give you two years, and that's the good thing. The downside is, the state said, we'll give you two years conditioned on your participation in a consolidation feasibility study. And we have responded by saying, we recognize that the state has an interest in making sure PID is viable long-term. Consolidation may be one way of ensuring that happens, but oh, by the way, there's other potential plans here that we are actively looking at and pursuing. So, that's why I say this is really a bigger discussion. Yes, this is a commitment of up to $35,900, but in my opinion, you're getting 14.6 million back, and you are hedging off the state and their objective to do some kind of consolidation. And again, we don't know what that exactly is, but all we know is the state wants it. So, it's a small investment to get a large sum of money back and to hopefully refocus the state on something that we would find maybe more palatable for our local community, as opposed to, you know, going from PID to something else.
Where's the 14.1 million come from?
It's general fund money. It's 14.6 something.
General fund for what?
It's out of the state's general fund.
State money coming back to us for backfill money.
Is there any guarantee on that?
We are guaranteed the first, this budget year's funds, so 14.3, and we were talking before the meeting, we hope to see that any moment, sooner than better.
7.3.
7.3?
Was it 14 or 7 million?
Oh, it's, okay, so it's two years. The state has said, provided you agree to participate, and then provided your participation is adequate, but if you agree to participate, you get one year. If your participation is adequate, you'll get the second year beginning July, after July 30, or, beginning July 1 of 2020.
Participation that they're looking for?
Pardon me?
And the participation they're looking for?
In the consolidation feasibility study. So, the state is saying...
Consolidated this thing with this Entei with this water district in Chico, and actually, it's statewide, it's a huge business, and people aren't aware. I lived in Dixon at one time, and they're, there was a water company there, so they're all over the state.
These are two separate issues.
Right.
These are two separate issues, Bill. Can you explain that a little bit?
Sure. So, the state is saying, okay, so here's the problem. The state, and it's a legitimate problem, one that you as a board need to noodle on and we need to resolve, is our customers are not going to be back in sufficient numbers to sustain us financially. That, that's a reality. It, we hope it'll happen five years from now or 10 years from now, but we don't know, right? So, we need to begin planning for the uncertainty and the fact that we will likely not have enough customers to financially sustain the district, as it currently exists.
The problem is right now, we're just copying the way our business plan has been in the past. Other words, we're having two field crews and our charter goes down, and we have all the people in the office and, and so forth, and I'm going, and we're, we're being told that we can't cut the budget. Well, 60% of the budget is employees' costs. And if we're only going to have 2,000 customers, and if that's what, you know, if that's what the planning basis has to be and the income from them, then if we can't do anything about consolidating, will the state understand us if we go in and we cut this district down to where it was 30 years ago in manpower and usage and everything else? And I can remember driving down Neo, and there was this hole in a little sandwich sign up, PID, and I went over to it one day, finally, after weeks of seeing it there, and I could hear the water going down, and it was a leak, but they didn't have, the district didn't have any money to fix it, and they had plenty of water. So, they just ignored it. Eventually, it was fixed about a year later. The thing is that, it's, in my memory, before I just got on the board, there was only one field crew and one superintendent of the field staff. There was a very thin office. There was a bookkeeper, not anybody with a CPA, and he was doing just fine, and he handled the investments too, and he did a good job. He had experience in industry. And our payroll was considerably less than where it is now. And I don't really see, since it's, we're just talking in here, where we're going to get out of this thing whole if we don't start planning for having to make these kind of cuts. In other words, we have to plan for the, for creating a situation where the state won't come into us and say, you guys never slowed down, you're spending money all over the place, and you don't have any customer base.
I, I agree, we need to start planning, and I think one of the things on the list of options is to gut the district. I don't think the community wants that, that's not what I hear at least. You wouldn't believe, people just happen to know I'm affiliated with PID, and they approach me and say, when is PID going to get to my house? You know, it's, it's, you're not doing things fast enough. So, if you're, I mean, yes, that's an option, but as is a water transfer, as is consolidation if you're the state, and that's their perspective.
What I'm trying to say, I guess, is, but I tell people when they call me, if, if they seem to be having some sort of sense of humor, and they're not too outraged by our service, I say, what we need to do is simply tell you when you call that, we give lousy service. We're sorry about it, but we don't have any choice in the matter. We'll get to you as soon as we can. Please put all the information you can for us to get to you and help you, but we don't have the resources.
So, I'll answer the question. I don't think that's the business model that we want to support right now. I think the business model that you look to support is to support your expenses by adding revenue to the top of that, and that's what this is trying to do. So, when you're trying to think outside the box and trying to think of business, a new business model, that's what we're doing here. We're trying to think of a new business model. I can tell you right now, the district, 95% of their costs are fixed. We have a treatment plant that requires 24-hour service. We have 173 miles of pipe that is in disrepair. You even pointed to it. We have, we have, you want us to do pipeline replacements of the 30, 30% of our steel line with what? With, with a field crew of nobody? So, the, the way that we're trying to operate is, we are on a, on a skeleton crew right now. We have people that we have not backfilled right now because we're using contract labor that we're getting paid through FEMA right now. We are under, these people up there, if you, if you go up and talk to them, they are working their butts off on a daily basis, on a weekend basis. But I'm talking, because you're, you're criticizing the customer service representatives, you're criticizing what we're trying to accomplish here, and, and I take offense to it, because these people are working their butts off to try to recover the water system for this town. We are working our butts off, trying to develop a new business model, just like what you asked, to sustain this water district for this town. There is options out there. You can gut this district. We can be late, we can be, have terrible customer service, we can let our, our, our system go into disrepair and leak all over this, this, this town. We can violate all kinds of different orders that require constant oversight from regulation, from all kinds of different departments in the California, in the state, and you know what the state will do? They will come over, and they will take us over, and they will give us over to another water agency that will raise the rates to what they feel is appropriate to cover their overhead, to cover their profit, and that's what will happen. So, that's where we're at. We are trying to establish a new business model.
Okay. I appreciate what you said, and I'm not meaning to criticize the ability of our employees or their care about the district and hard work, that's not part of it. The thing is, it's like this Entei business we're talking about. Okay, you go to next year in this test investigation, and say, they say, you could do this, this, and this, and where are you going to get the money? And then you hit all the different things, you've got hurdles to right of way, other things that are going to come up that you have to work through. Now, time is going by, the clock is ticking as we're doing this. We're doing all of this to get ready for this Entei, and we're telling the state about it. Now, we're, it's consuming management time and what little cash we have on different things. We'll get reimbursed probably for most of it. But it's time, and as time stretches out, we're still not fixing the problem here with the leaking pipes and good service and getting people back in this town. I don't know how many people I know that have left because of the water, the lack of potable water. They've gone all over the country. Out, a lot of them want to come back now, but their restriction about them coming back is potable water. So, to me, the gamble is better to fix the pipes in the short term, because you can show results and get people back in here with potable water. Don't bother with the Entei.
We're doing, we're proposing to do both, Bill. We're, we're working on this right now, as, as you know, as best we can, okay? With, our entire staff is focused on repairs, sampling, trying to get potable water back to our customers. This is separate. This is something we will be doing in conjunction with that still going on, okay? And I, I, I understand what you're saying. It'll, it'll take some of Kevin's time, it already has taken some of Kevin's time, it's taken Dustin's time, that's correct. But as Dustin stated, the, the state is in the driver's seat here. They are watching us now, okay, and, and our direction, and how, where we're going to go.
Okay, now, now, in the realm of politics, now, who's going to, who's going to support us on one way or another?
Well, we have, we have our local support from our local officials.
Yeah.
Representative Gallagher, I know, I, I might be misspeaking, but Lamalfe as well. So, we have our local politicians and the county support, of course.
Right. What I'm talking about is the owners of the district.
Yeah, I, I think, I think, I think our customers, once they understand what is, what's really transpiring here, I think we will have full support from the customers. I really do.
I would, I would agree with that. I think, especially given that if this plan, if the feasibility study comes back and it's a positive, that it's feasible for us to do it, then we would potentially be keeping rates at an affordable rate for our customers, which is what they all want.
We're not charging any more?
Once we're able to start charging, Bill, then... Once we're able to start charging, Bill, then, and we're talking, perhaps 7% of our population pre-fire will return in the next several years. We can't, we can't continue on a path of no plan. My only question for you, Dustin, is, is...
We're giving water away. We're not putting out meters. We're not collecting on it. We're collecting a set fee. The last board meeting, how many people are quitting the district because of the set fee? They're have, whatever, they're no longer customers on their property. So we're losing customers.
We're going to continue to lose them, because the longer we don't have potable water back in the community...
Yes, Bill.
Agreed, but you can't charge for non-potable water.
But you can charge for potable water.
But, agreed, but we're not there yet. It's a step. We're taking steps in the recovery, and we're just not there yet. This is part of the strategic plan for how we're going to recover and be an ongoing business. Otherwise, we're not going to have a business model, and we're not going to have employees to employ.
Before the meeting today, I walked around the yard. I do that. And I didn't talk to anybody particularly, but there was nobody working in a meter shop. There was no meters anywhere that I saw.
Well, they're all out working, trying to repair the system.
No, they're putting backflow devices together.
And that is, that is the priority right now. That is the priority. Meters are on the back burner, Bill. Unless you're a new construction, and you have a new house that's come up online, then yes.
I'm glad we're having this discussion, because to me, I saw four people putting together backflow devices, even cutting the pipe for what'd be the right size and everything else, a little assembly line out there. And I'm going, "Wait a minute. There's four people that could be out working on repairing pipes and doing other things, and we can be buying backflow devices from manufacturers that are certified for this, and raising the price on them, and ordering them as needed. But we keep our manpower in the field."
But those are no costs to us. If they're Alliance for Workforce Development, they're free labor. And it keeps the costs down. So there's more pieces to it. I think it's a brilliant plan, as far as what we're doing to try and meet the customer's desire right now, is to get those backflow devices in, so people can get back on their property and start their reconstruction. I mean, people want that. That's the biggest complaint I hear from people, is, "When am I going to get my meter, or my backflow device in, so I can start..."
The problem is the labor.
Agreed. And Kevin has even found a solution for that.
The quality of the labor.
Well, everyone's trainable. And everyone gives, in my opinion, everyone deserves an opportunity to learn. And they've tapped into a way that they're finding viable candidates for that. I think it's a good solution.
This isn't rocket science. This is, this is putting pipe together. You know, it's plumbing, okay?
The guys are doing outstanding. I just, I manage, Jim manages them, I manage Jim. I get reports back from Jim that these people are putting together backflow assemblies, like machines, and doing wonderful work. I just want to say that.
Just because they were unemployed doesn't mean that they're not capable.
Absolutely.
So I did have a question, though, Dustin, I want to get back to. So I know that the back funding has been contingent upon us looking at a consolidation feasibility study. So if we approve this feasibility study with the county to do the intertie, is the state going to be willing to accept that as us making progress? Or are they going to say, "Hmm, that's not what we agreed to"?
Well, that's a discussion we'll have eventually. But you need to put me, and Kevin, and Assemblymember Gallagher, Senator Nielsen, in a position where we can at least have the argument, right? Yes, you've got a consolidation study here, state. You may have political objectives that you like with that, but we don't need that, because we've got other alternatives that we are focused on, and are feasible, and we can implement. And it may not just be the intertie concept. We may develop other feasible, you know, concepts to also do a feasibility study on. To be determined, right? But we need to be put in a position where we can at least have that argument. And by the way, I, you know, I'm normally pessimistic, but I'm, I am optimistic about this.
You are.
Kevin and I keep talking about this. I think the, one way to look at this positively is to recognize the state has a legitimate point. We need to be planning. And they think planning is consolidation. Well, okay, we can look at consolidation multiple different ways. Maybe it's consolidation to PID. Maybe it could be linked in with the intertie project. We know that, as Director Kellogg mentioned, there are some water users along the Skyway corridor that are currently on wells that don't function very well. There could be turnouts to deliver to those folks. And the former golf course that is now a FEMA workers' encampment, that is zoned for housing development. And that could be another potential future customer. So it could be, it's not necessary consolidation from PID to another entity. If we have anything to say about it, it's maybe consolidation of these other areas to PID, and we just become more of a regional provider. So the way we communicated to the state, which we, we can send that correspondence to you, is that we intend to be very active, working with the state water board, developing the scope of work, selection of the consultant. You know, we want it to be a true independent, not, not somebody that is just, you know, kind of fitting a feasibility study around an outcome that somebody may want. So we want it to be an independent consultant. And then we want to be very active in the development and the analysis of the study, just so it's legitimate. So if you don't mind, I will attempt to answer Director Kellogg's questions. Water rights, yes, that's an issue that we will have to deal with, and it would be a minor part of the feasibility study. We've already had some preliminary discussions with the Division of Water Rights with the state, and there are, they're very accommodating. They understand the issue, and I'm confident we'll get that solved. You mentioned we'd have one customer, Cal Water Service. The way we are thinking about the concept, the buyer of the water is actually the county, Bu County. The receiver of the water would then be Cal Water Chico. And there's many reasons why you do that, but chief among them is the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act law. That requires all basins in California to be sustainable and have plans about their groundwater sustainability. The county is really in the driver's seat in that sub-basin for that sustainability plan. And the county has the, you know, the full reach of the sub-basin, so that the fees could be dispersed amongst all the groundwater users in that sub-basin. Whereas Cal Water is only a small piece of that, of that sub-basin area. Yes, they're a large groundwater user, but they're not the exclusive groundwater user. So the county would be the purchaser of the water. It would be backed by all of the groundwater users in that sub-basin, including Cal Water Chico. And then the water would be delivered to Chico. Return on investment, that's actually a topic that will be addressed in the feasibility. That's why you do a feasibility study, to see if it makes economic sense, or one of the reasons. And then, you know, last point, back to, you mentioned Sigma, and I mentioned it, Director Kellogg. This, this has the potential to be, you know, a multi-win project. It's a potential win for PID, because it's a way for us to stay financially viable, to then continue to deliver water to our own customers, in district customers, at whatever pace the rebuilding occurs, right? We'll be, you come back, whether it's five years, 10 years, 50 years from now, we'll be ready whenever you come back. Because the agreement will have to be flexible enough to deal with the return of the population. So it's a win for us. It's also a win for the county and Cal Water, because they arguably have a sustainability problem with their aquifer that they need to address. And it's pretty simple. When you are overpumping groundwater, you either reduce pumping, or you find an alternate supply. So we're an alternate supply. And I am convinced that there's also an environmental benefit to Butte Creek, but that's kind of speculation at this point. But it has a lot of upside. And if, as I said earlier, if for nothing more than just doing the feasibility study, I think that will be a benefit when we have to go back to the state and tell them what we've been up to, and why they've wisely invested 14.6 million dollars in us.
In my opinion, the cost is a small price to pay for the money that they've given us, and it also gives us ammunition to defend ourselves. I, I love, I learn so much when I hear Director Kellogg give us history and his opinions. We will probably always differ on some of them, just simply because my idea for the district post-fire is that we have to evolve. You know, my grandparents moved here in 1958. I've been around my whole life here. And everything has evolved. I remember my grandfather throwing a fit when we got the first traffic light. "It's the beginning of the end. It's the beginning of the end." And he was livid. He fought it tooth and nail. And I just believe that we're, we're post-apocalypse 2019, and we have to evolve. And I think it's a small price to pay for what it gives us. We might look at it and say, you know, wad it up and throw it in the corner and go, "Damn it, he was right again." And we, it might be our saving grace, in my opinion.
Okay. Thank you, Dan. Well, let's, do we have a, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the MOU to participate in a feasibility study for Ridge Valley intertie concept.
In a second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay. I think that concludes the meeting, if I'm not mistaken.
I got one, some remarks to say. I thank you very much for hearing me out, and let me venting. Now I'll be calm for a week or two, like nothing else, to get mad about. So, but no, I really appreciate listening, and I especially appreciate Dustin replying on my...
Thank you, Bill.
All right. Meeting is hereby adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks.